Sweating in some places.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Cindy Silva, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, and I want to welcome you to the Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 Special Closed Session Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber, and we are complying with the current regulations of the State of California regarding public meetings. Members of the public are welcome to join us in person here at City Hall, or you may watch the meeting through the city's TV channel, through the city's YouTube channel, or on the city's Zoom video conferencing platform. Before we take public comment, I will ask our city attorney to review the subjects of today's closed session meeting. Mr. Mattis?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council is holding a special meeting today. The purpose of the special meeting is for the City Council to consider two closed-session items. The first closed-session item relates to real property negotiations in relation to Lot A, a small 50-square-foot parcel the city owns near the end of the potential Kinross extension. The City Council will not take any final action as part of the closed session. If, following negotiations between the parties, there is a potential property conveyance agreement, any action that the council would take involving the potential sale would be considered and potentially acted upon in an open session at a notice City Council meeting. It would be, it would likely be several weeks or months before any such action may be presented to the City Council for consideration. The second closed-session item relates to anticipated litigation and potential exposure to litigation. On a related matter, please note that public comments during a special City Council meeting, which is what we're holding today, are limited to items on the special City Council meeting agenda. Therefore, any comments that the public might make relate, would relate to either of the two closed-session items. If anyone desires to make public comments on a subject that's not on the special City Council meeting agenda, we recommend that you hold those comments and speak during public comments as part of the regular City Council meeting scheduled to start at 6 o'clock this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do council members have any questions of the city attorney? All right, thank you very much. I will now begin the public comment period. We will first take public comment from those who are here in person today, then we will hear comments from those who are joining us through our video conferencing platform. We have collected speaker cards from those who wish to speak here in the chambers. If you have not completed a card and you would like to speak and you're willing to tell us your name, we would love for you to do it now and then give it to the city clerk so we can get you into the queue. I will now call the names of the first 10 speakers and ask that you line up behind the speaker podium, which is right there, and line up along the window wall there, and wait your turn to speak. So I will read the first names. Carl Lofthouse, Jim Frey, Steve Curtis, Alessia Epps, Marcia Newey, Carol Curtis, Marilyn Cole, Asbjur Korsachi, I apologize if I mispronounced it, Eleanor Daze, and Francine Ruotolo. While you're all queuing up, there's a reminder to those who wish to make comments remotely, please be sure to log into the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The webinar ID is 899-8797-4145, and the passcode is 273525. Now, as the city attorney explained, under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. And in this case, in case you weren't able to hear it, we will accept comments on the two closed-session items. First, the conference with real property negotiators about Lot A of subdivision map 4006, and the other is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. A few other notes, and I apologize for making you wait. Please remember, this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that our meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively. Also, we want to ensure that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard, and we want to ensure that everyone feels welcome to speak. So, that means we ask that you have no clapping or cheering, because in fact, clapping and cheering, although it sounds great to those who support your point of view, is intimidating or can be intimidating to those who might disagree. In all cases, please address your remarks to us, the City Council, and please do not use profanity. Each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks, and you can see the countdown clock, whether you are here in the council chamber or you're speaking remotely. The two-minute time limit is consistent with city policies related to public comments, which are in Section 9.5 of our City Council handbook. These policies were initially adopted in July 2014 and were last amended in September 2019. Now, if you are representing a group and you are speaking on behalf of the group, you will have up to 10 minutes to speak. But as a courtesy, we assume that the other members of your group will not be speaking this afternoon. And now, we will start with our first speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carl Lofthouse. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek and a voter for over 30 years. I'm also a board member of Heather Farms Homeowner Association. I've come to speak in opposition to transfer of Lot A to the developer. My main concern is about increased traffic in our neighborhood. Kinross entrance will connect to Marchbanks Drive. With the recently incorporated bicycle lanes, Marchbanks has been effectively reduced to a two-lane road, one going each direction. This project could load Marchbanks with an extra 1,100 vehicles per day. Not a good idea when the current 25-year general plan is stressing bicycle and pedestrian traffic. Those vehicles that don't use Marchbanks will no doubt take a shortcut on the private portion of Kinross right through our community. In doing so, they will pass within feet of the front doors of 75 homes in our neighborhood, many of which have young families with children. Another traffic issue relates to nearby Heather Farms Park. The developer is proposing that North San Carlos Drive be used for emergency vehicles. When we consider that over 1 million people use this park each year, and that a fair number of those people, including many children, will need to cross North San Carlos to get from the parking areas to the recreation and play areas, then back to their cars. Also, many bicyclists use North San Carlos when entering and exiting the trail system. These two facts alone should be a big red flag on the potential danger of emergency vehicles speeding through the park at any time of day. Therefore, I urge you to refuse transfer of Lot A to the developer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lofthouse. The next speaker, please.
City Council members, Madam Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Frey. I am a Walnut Creek resident. I live in Heather Farms. I am one of more than 4,000 people who signed a petition against the Speaker project. We felt that the county supervisors somewhat ignored our concerns about the project and the changing of the general plan. We are against the use of Kinross Drive as the entrance to the development. A Speaker spokesman, who shall remain nameless but is sitting there, told our group that they were ambivalent about which road would be the entrance. There are several historical documents that state that Kinross shall not connect to Seven Hills Ranch, but now they have decided that they want to have Kinross Drive as their entrance. Speaker not only wants to invalidate these city documents, they have already published information on their development that they say that they have a right of way to use Kinross Drive. The great majority of the residents of Heather Farms and Club Terrace are against using Kinross. We live there. We pay property taxes. We deserve to have our voices heard. Ned Speaker got his development project. He will make millions more than what he's already made. He has everything that he wanted on the development. We residents of Heather Farms very simply do not want to have Kinross become a thoroughfare. And we ask that you do not ignore our position on this, nor the governing documents, and please put these residents, your constituents, ahead on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frey. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Curtis. I'm a residential architect and real estate broker for 50 years. I've lived in Heather Farms. I am very pro-housing, especially affordable and moderate-income housing for sale. The underlying concept of the Speaker project is excellent, but unlike their sister project in Pleasanton, this project is fatally flawed. From a zoning standpoint, the project was approved by the county about 15 years prematurely because it will take that long for the downstream neighborhoods between Oak Road and the project to be appropriately transitioned so as to not disturb the cultural fabric of the overall community. Even then, the transition zoning only works in actual practice if the primary access is off of Seven Hills Ranch Road directly down to Civic Drive via Walden, then left to either downtown Walnut Creek or right to the Pleasant Hill Barge Station, a major commercial arterial with very little traffic that can easily accommodate the increased commercial and residential traffic from the project. It makes a zoning and the project make sense, it does not make any sense, and simply does not work to feed this traffic onto already impacted Ignacio Valley Road through residential infrastructure neighborhoods. Instead of acting transparently, the county has dumped all of these challenges onto the City of Walnut Creek. That should not be your responsibility, nor should the failure to act properly be your problem to solve and our mess to live with. The commercial level traffic belongs on Oak Road. The existence of Lot A was intended, at least in part, to prevent the exact manipulation of the City of Walnut Creek's orderly plan for growth that is now being thrust upon it by the County Board of Supervisors. Regardless of any ultimate ownership issues that may exist regarding Lot A, the City of Walnut Creek should clearly and emphatically restrict the county, or instruct the county, that if they want to provide increased density in whatever form, the county must take responsibility to manage the infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Hello, my name is Alessia Epps, and I'm a Walnut Creek resident, raising three young kids in the city. We live right across the street from the proposed development, and our lives and lives of my family, my kids, our neighbors will be directly and greatly impacted by all the decisions that you're about to make. I participated in past public hearings and attended County Boards of Supervisors meeting last fall, so I'm very familiar with the issue. I respectfully request that the City of Walnut Creek does not allow for any transfer of the Lot A parcel as the developer is requesting. The City of Walnut Creek originally took Lot A from our community as the security instrument to prevent the through traffic between Kinross Drive and the Seven Hills Ranch Road. This promise to the people should prevail. Also, in this incredibly unbalanced act, the county made a decision that benefits the county but pushes all the responsibility and the cost of associated deliverables to this massive, of this massive project to the city and its residents, to all of us. The development can be approached by the county road, and the city does not have to allow this disruptive main access through the city's neighborhoods when the entrance via county road already exists and is available. Having main entrance in Kinross would greatly impact the quality of life in our neighborhood by bringing commercial-type traffic through our neighborhoods, through Marchbanks, the Heather Farms Drive, and the San Carlos Drive. A lot of residents, not only from Walnut Creek but surrounding areas, are coming and visiting the Heather Farms Park, and all of that will be disrupted by this development traffic that would be a lot different than any simple suburban residential development traffic. My last comment is with regard to how the city discusses this topic.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
It may depend on who's speaking. Some people have louder voices than others.
When you come up to the microphone, you need to basically move it, but move it gently, don't yank on it, or otherwise we'll be done with public comment.
And we don't want that to happen, as you can see.
Next speaker, please.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Carol Curtis, a lifelong county resident, almost 20 years of that in Walnut Creek, and I'm also the president of the Board of Directors of the Heather Farms Homeowners Association, and I respectfully ask to extend my comment time to 2 minutes and 25 seconds. I'm here today on my behalf and that of approximately 1,000 of your constituents urging you to exercise your discretion and deny any offer concerning Lot A proposed by Speaker Senior Development Partners. Some have dismissed us as nimby's. Not true. We are Walnut Creek residents, wholeheartedly in support of sound residential development, which we would welcome on this parcel. The developer may tell you that they tried to work with us and that we did not negotiate in good faith. Also not true. We entered negotiations expecting compromise. What we got was an agreement to repair construction caused damage, something they'd have to do anyway, and an indeterminate limit on the number of delivery trucks, but with an admission that some of them would be semis on our residential streets. The developer thought buying new locks for our pools and tennis courts would address our concerns, but it doesn't. We took the developer at his word when he said he did not care which access roads they used. Turns out that's not true either. In a significant compromise, our HOA asked them to limit traffic over Lot A to members and guests, and to use a different entrance for commercial and employee access. They declined to go back to the county to revise their project. So I ask you, who actually compromised in these negotiations. What is true is that this developer has tried repeatedly to negotiate everything surrounding Lot A behind closed doors. What does he want to hide? We're not asking you to evaluate the merits of this quasi-commercial development. The county's approved it, but the county also outsourced all the negative impacts. We and you do not have to accept that burden. They say you can't fight City Hall, and we don't want to fight City Hall. We want City Hall to fight for us.
And remember, I said we're not going to clap and cheer because there may be some who disagree with you and might like to speak. So, next speaker, please.
My name is Deli Malkowitz, and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1978. I have lived in my home at 330 Kinross Drive since 1978. The last time I came to speak to the City Council about matters concerning Kinross Drive was when the unused hole of the Diablo Hills Golf Course was being considered as a site to build what is now the terraces. As the president of the Board at that time, my concerns then are as they are today: the use of our private street, Kinross Drive. The city approved the building of these homes, and promises were made by the developer that no heavy-duty equipment would enter our private streets. I'm here today to tell you that these promises were not kept. I saw cement mixers, bulldozers, backhoes, and heavy-duty trucks go past my home on their way to the building site off the Kinross Spur through Marchbanks. Now residents of the terraces use our street to get to their homes, coming off Ignacio to Kinross. Nobody pays attention to our signage that says Heather Farms Homeowners Association, "Private." You can find on a GPS the way to Ignacio to reach Marchbanks is via Kinross. With all due respect to the developer of the Glen at Heather Farms and to the City Council, whom must choose an entrance for this development, I can say to you that promises are made, but for some reason or other are not kept, even though the best of intentions are presented. I fear that for the duration of the excavation and building process, we shall have heavy-duty equipment on our private street, Kinross Drive. Upon completion of the project, I see a nightmare of new residential traffic and service trucks associated with the new development.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Kinross Drive is...
Thank you very much. With two minutes limit. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcia Newey, and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek for 38 years and 28 years in Heather Farms Homeowners Association. We are at a crossroads. Either you, as our representatives, continuing to support our neighborhood as previous City Council members have done over the years, or you sell Lot A. As you know, Lot A was created for the public purpose that Kinross Drive would not be connected to Seven Hills Ranch. This was stated in the city's 1970s general plan and has since been restated in many city documents and in the 2005 general plan. The reason for this was to protect our neighborhood. My husband and I and our neighbors attended the city planning and City Council meetings in the fall of 2004, when the city was looking at approving what is now Club View Terrace. We were assured multiple times that Kinross Drive would not be connected to Seven Hills Ranch. We are not denying the developer access to Seven Hills Ranch as there is access via county road onto the property. Our neighborhood should not take the hit because the county approved this project. So, are you going to do the right thing and protect our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, this is Özgür Kuzaj. I'm a professional geologist and a resident of Walnut Creek. I moved to Walnut Creek in 2003, and ever since, I believed it was a safe and fun place to live and to raise a family eventually. Today, I left my newborn at home to be here because I believe her future is not safe if this proposed entrance is approved, because we live right across the street. Ignacio Valley Road is the main artery to Heather Farms Park area of Walnut Creek, and as a professional geologist with a PhD in earthquake hazards, I believe adding such an industrial-scale facility to this area will pose significant and unnecessary risk on the residents, especially during emergencies, earthquakes, fire hazards, you name it. Furthermore, this area has narrow streets where our kids bike and walk to schools. Such traffic will put them in harm's way every single day. It is your responsibility to represent thousands of waltzing residents who live in this area and protect their well-being. Please deny this entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. And before, the next speaker can come forward, but I'm going to read some additional names. Rosemary Nishikawa, Richard Scow, Mary Howard Hollis, Barbara Gilbert, Terri Anne Sturiel. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Dassy, and I've lived the last 53 years in Arinda. I just want to begin by thanking you, the City of Walnut Creek, along with the county, for bringing this important project to a neighborhood near me. I lost my husband two years ago and see the Glen at Heather Farms as a perfect next place to live and age. I want to reassure people that live in that area that part of my objective in moving there is so I can be in my car on a very, very limited basis. I love the idyllic setting and look forward to hikes on the many trails around there. As a former... As a former independent school educator, I would love to volunteer and help students at the Seven Hills School with math, as long as my brain stays as good as it is now, of course, and I hope that there would be many other active seniors that would love to get involved in the classroom, the library, with sports or the arts at Seven Hills. And finally, I would be so happy to be able to remain close to two of my three children and many grandchildren, but I do not want them to assume responsibility for my health care. Thank you again for your dedication to Walnut Creek.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council. My name is Marilyn Cole. I've lived in the city of Walnut Creek for more than 35 years. I'd like to share how happy I am that the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors has approved the Glen at Heather Farm. I am so excited to be able to retire in the same community where I have lived for so long. Living at the Glen at Heather Farm will free me from home maintenance and allow me to age in place with other seniors. Long-term care will be available in the same community should I ever need it, eliminating the need for me to navigate this myself in a crisis. The Glen at Heather Farm is perfect for a widow like me. Thank you, city of Walnut Creek, for bringing this project to my neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Well, I'm going to keep this short and sweet, as we say in Boston, my birthplace. I think the HOA president said it so well, so succinctly, really, covered a lot of territory, and I think she spoke incredibly, seriously well for all of us because we feel strongly. I've lived here and had the farm's development for 27 years, and I feel close to the park. I smile every time I go by the swimming pool filled with children, Heather Farms filled with children, families, tents. I mean, it's a joy to be a part of this community, and I've always felt like that for Walnut Creek. But we do not need all this transportation. We do not need to open up a road that has been bound by contract by people who thought it was going to be intrusive. It is extremely intrusive. It will be intrusive. Who wants trucks loaded with dirt up and down your streets when you go into the post office or you're going to Pete's for coffee? I do not. Thank you very much, councils.
Excuse me, ma'am. Are you, excuse me, are you Francine?
I am Franc, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't introduce myself. I'm Francine Rotolo.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Rosemary Nishikawa. I wanted to give some dimensions of the vehicles that are going to be going up and down Ignacio Valley Boulevard that look like this and like this. The dimensions of these vehicles are quite large, and my concern is when we all go home, going up Ignacio, making a left-hand turn onto Marchbanks, that only holds about eight or nine cars. The dimensions of the dump truck is, they're about 20 to 30 feet long and about eight to nine feet wide. Off-highway trucks are 15 to 30 feet long and about, excuse me, the length is 30 to 50, 50 feet long and 15 to 30 feet wide. Typically, a scraper truck is about 40 to 50 feet long and the width is 10 to 16 feet. Now, when you're making a left-hand turn, you're getting out of the fast lane and you're going to the left-hand turn lane. If these trucks are in that left-hand turn lane, there's not going to be a lot of room for other people to make a left-hand turn. It's going to press everybody over into the fast lane, and it's going to be a freaking mess. So I just want you to take that into consideration. I feel like, I don't know why the official current entrance to Seven Hills Ranch property is being considered as the main thoroughfare for Speaker on this property. It should not be our problem that the entrance is not suitable for Speaker. That should not be something that is our problem, it's their problem. But this is a big 30-acre business complex. It's half the size of downtown Walnut Creek: movie theaters, hair salons, bars, restaurants, hospital, nursing home, bocce courts.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Mary Hollis, and I live in the Heather Farms neighborhood. I bought my house 27 years ago, but I've lived in Walnut Creek for 33. I wanted to just make one point that I don't think is going to be made by other speakers today, and it's going to be quick. Please, before you consider deciding your vote on this access to Ken Ross from the Seven Hills Ranch area, go drive these streets. If you've never been on that piece of Ken Ross, drive it. If you've never been on Marchbanks before, because you don't live in that part of Walnut Creek, please drive it, and you'll see how tight it is already on Marchbanks, just coming in and out of our neighborhood. So I would just encourage you to please drive the area and get a feel for what we're, why we're upset about this, to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Gilbert, and I've been a resident of Contra Costa County for my entire life, over 50 years. I've been working for Speaker for nearly 16 years and have been involved in the Stone Ridge Creek development in Pleasanton. Like Heather Farm, when I started in Pleasanton, the community had not yet been approved, and construction had not yet begun. Having had the experience of working with retirees and their families as they made the decision to move to a Speaker life-planned community, and then watching them make that transition, has been the most rewarding career I could have ever asked for. It is a privilege to provide an option which allows seniors to decide for themselves how and where they will age. I have watched them and their families breathe easier, knowing that the long-term care is available if ever needed. I've also watched them develop real and meaningful friendships and relationships at a time in their lives when worlds typically get smaller. I'm so grateful to the city and to the county, and I'm thrilled for so many Walnut Creek seniors who'll be able to call Heather Farm their home. Thank you.
Thank you. And as the next speaker is walking up, I'm going to read some more names: Jack Waddell, Kristin Lamasny, Gregory Reed, Leslie Hunt.
I am Terri Anne Sturioli, and I want you to know.
You know what?
I want you to know that my husband and I are delighted that you are discussing the Glen at Heather Farm. I was fortunate enough to teach in the Walnut Creek School District for 25 years. Many of those years were teaching third grade, where part of the curriculum is studying the Walnut Creek history. I brought my students to city council meetings such as this one so that they could see how our local government works. I also took them to the historical tour that Brad Rabinpova conducted for all third graders, and I'm using, and was using this pictorial chronicle of Walnut Creek that Mr. Robyn Perro compiled. Learning about the history of Walnut Creek added to my love for this city. When my son-in-law's job was relocated, my daughter and her husband moved to Florida. Her wish is that we follow her so that she would be able to monitor our care as we age. We don't want to move to Florida. The Glen at Heather Farm provides us the opportunity to remain in our community. My daughter will not have to worry about finding the needed support for us from a distance, because when age robs us of the ability to handle issues independently, the Glen would be the agent to see that we receive the necessary care. I have much for which to be thankful to Walnut Creek, but right now, I am most grateful to you for bringing this project to our neighborhood and allowing my husband and myself the opportunity to stay in our community as we age. We hope that your discussion includes any aspect that will make life at the Glen at Heather Farm easy and convenient for Walnut Creek seniors.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Scow, and I'm a long-term resident of Contra Costa County and presently live in Rancho Pariso. We've grown, we've aged, we've grown our family, two sons live in the area, and we enjoy living here. We look forward to the rest of our life being here, and we really appreciate what the city council and the Board of Supervisors have done recently in approving this project, and you're having the foresight to see this project and how it's going to be implemented for Walnut Creek and really improve our community. We won't have to go to Pleasanton or Fairfield to see the continuing care that the Glen is going to offer to us, and that means a lot to us and to our children as they look at our care and going into the future. Again, we really appreciate the foresight that you have shown and look forward to having you come and visit the facility after it's built there, and perhaps many of you will be residents yourself one day and be able to enjoy the facility when it's there, because it's going to be a real charm for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jack Waddell, and I'm a longtime resident of Contra Costa County. Been in this division for about eight years now. But I just have to note that the, we've been to the breakfasts sponsored by the developer, and it certainly is a great project. It seems like a really nice project, just not for here, because any ingress or egress to this facility, once it's done, would be totally disruptive to a large number of neighborhoods, including ours, down to Cherry Lane and back into the Seven Hills School. There was no, as I recall, the members of the council were not particularly enthused about the project when it was presented to them originally, and I would submit that there's no reason why they should change their mind about that. The mere fact that there may be a situation in the future where you might have this project completed, maybe it would be annexed by the city at some point in time, and you'd have some increased taxes, that would be a reason that I hope you would not consider. So I really hope that you will try to maintain the peace and tranquility of this neighborhood by refusing to sell this little piece of land, and you know, under no obligation to sell that piece of land. And that would require them to start over and go to the county, and perhaps they could find another place that would be a little bit better in terms of the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Next speaker, please.
I'm Kristin Lamasny, and I'm a Walnut Creek resident who lives on Marchbanks at Ken Ross, and I'm against the sale of Lot A. Upon learning about this development in 2020, I did a Zoom call with Speaker, which I appreciated, during which they told me the city and the county directed them to place the main entrance at Ken Ross. It shocked me, because as you must know, in order to go east on Ignacio from the east end of Marchbanks, you have to go through Heather Farm Park to get to the traffic light on San Carlos Drive. I mean, that's already hairy. You've got kids on skateboards and bikes, tennis players, kids, cars coming from the school and the dog park and the playing fields. I just can't imagine adding hundreds of employee cars and commercial vehicles a day to this main that would be required by this main entrance, especially given the city's recent and considerable investment in the park. So I wonder, what would the city's plan be to address a possible Marchbanks entrance impact on the traffic flow on Marchbanks and Ignacio? Would a traffic light be installed on the east end of Marchbanks, or would you have cars continue to cut through the park? Note that Ken Ross through Heather Farms HOA is narrow, winding, and full of speed bumps, so it's not a viable throughway. And note that the west end of Marchbanks would need adjustment as well, because making a right turn on Ignacio is already difficult with cars coming over the hill down Ignacio at really high speed. So to turn safely, you have to wait for the light. The light favors Ignacio through traffic, so cars are already backed up there. So this decision really affects a lot of people, park and golf course visitors, as well as the area's many residents, both apartments and condos. And Marchbanks is already a very complicated street, as we've discovered when Ignacio was closed this past January due to the downed power lines at Tempeco, and we found ourselves locked in with no way out. Ignacio is the only way out of Marchbanks. Please don't add to the bottlenecking that we have on Marchbanks at Ignacio by letting this development place their main entrance on an already-packed street. And I would also ask if it's possible to disclose any of the communications, the number of times, with Speaker?
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Greg Reed. I know at least 12 couples who are friends of ours who have signed on to try to get into this project. It is unique, as you know, in Contra Costa County. There's not another one like it. It affords both housing as houses, they call villas and apartments and whatever name they apply. It gives us an opportunity, as a couple, my wife and I, to go there, live in an outdoor setting, and have the availability of nursing care and memory care if either of us should need that. It's a wonderful project. I've lived in Contra Costa County for more than 50 years, having grown up in the Midwest, and I commend and thank you for your approval of this project.
Before the next speaker, as she's on her way up, come on, Leslie, I have two more cards. If anyone else here in the council chambers wishes to speak, but Marilyn Bowles and Troy Born, and if anyone else wishes to speak, please come forward, if you needed to. Get us the cards.
I am here today. Am I speaking into this microphone?
Lean in a little.
Practically kissing it?
Yes. Stand on your toes.
There we go. I can hear myself on the phone now. Okay. I am representing both Friends of the Creeks and the Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation today, and therefore request 10 minutes, although I will not use it all. I have lived in Walnut Creek for 47, I have lived in Walnut Creek for 47 years now, and as many people in this room know, I have been deeply involved in open space and other natural things. We were delighted to discover that we had accidentally moved to a place that shared our values, but I do not think that this program or this project represents the values that both, that the city holds, most importantly. It doesn't matter so much what I think. But this is a city which has valued its open space, which has valued its citizens, its economic equity. It has been progressive about many things, and this project, to me, represents none of that. We voted against gates in this city. This project is gated. We believe that our citizens should be able to use our downtown, et cetera, et cetera. But this city, or this project, is walled off from the city that it happens to be located in. There were many things that, well, let me finish that point. It is my understanding that the county still collects, no matter what, most of the taxes, both property tax and sales tax. There's nothing much about this city or this project that brings the residents out into the city, because so many of the facilities they need are right there on the grounds with them. We are not going to benefit. We are simply going to suffer when they're on our streets. It's our responsibility to fix our streets, which they will help to use. I don't know how many more arrangements there are with open, with law enforcement cooperation agreements and things like that, but I have a feeling that we're bearing more of a burden than we're getting in benefit. There are many ways in which this project could have been designed to be more in line with our project, our environment. with our environmental values. There are ways in which, you know, many projects could have been designed to provide the kind of housing that this whole area has a crying need for, housing that would welcome new families, young families in, but they aren't here.
I need to be, you need to be cognizant that you're drifting into another subject, which is what the project is and isn't, and that's not what we're here for. So try to stick to our closed session topics.
I will move back.
Thank you, Leslie.
So what we are looking at is a discussion of whether we will sell this piece of property or not. You have a certain room, amount of room to negotiate. I hope that you will bear in mind what the people today have said and what our municipal values are as you consider what to do about this, and that you will find a way to derive equal benefit for Walnut Creek for what Walnut Creek is giving this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Next speaker, please.
Let me see if I get this right. I do. Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Bowles, and I want to thank all of you and all of your predecessors because I think you've done an extraordinary job for Walnut Creek. And of all the people I've heard, I think, and I don't relish this, but I think I've lived in Walnut Creek longer than any of them. I've been my present home for 50 years, and I lived in another home in Walnut Creek for several years before that. And like other people, I am in, strongly in favor of, they've changed their name, but the Glen at Walnut Creek, and I do hope to live there someday. My understanding is when we look back that it was zoned for either a place like this or single-family homes, and all the environmental impact reports show that this would have far less impact than single-family homes. I appreciate and I realize that the people there will be impacted when it is built. I think most people here have had their kitchen remodeled. It impacts us in a severe way, but we look forward, when it is finished, to something better, and we give up that temporary inconvenience major for something better in the future. And I think that's what the board needs to consider, is the future, looking forward. And you have done that in the past, and I hope you do that in the, for this project in the future. The census shows that the group that's going to grow the most, guess what? And that's not fortunate, but it's people like me. It's not kindergartners. So I think you should consider all aspects of this. And I am a former educator, having taught at DVC for 10 years and other places as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today. I have two more cards. Ann Hassett, and is this Hope Egan?
Hello, my name is Ann Hassett, and I live in Walnut Creek in the Heather Farms development. And I just decided to stand up because I want to back it up to the beginning here and remind us, we're not here to talk about the project. That's a done deal. We're here to talk about this strip of land that, as small as it may be, the decision to vote yes will be, have a mighty impact on the local neighborhoods. And I think so many of us feel that the Contra Costa Board of Supervisors just negated our voice at their last and final meeting. So the project's a done deal, and we get that. It's just our concern and our request is that you hang on to this little strip of land so that our neighborhoods are protected, we don't have all the traffic and everything everybody else has talked about, and just our request is that you just find another route in that is less disruptive to our peace and quiet and to our neighborhoods as we know them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Hope Egan, is Hope? Yes.
Hi, my name is Hope Egan, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As the last speaker said, I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I just feel a little agitated at the fact that we're starting to stress the importance of this development, which I don't feel is what we're here for. It's already been approved. What we're here for is to save that property and not have it be a pass bypass for more traffic and all the dirt and the complications that will come with it. I respect and I'm excited for these people to move to this place. I've seen the one in Pleasanton, and it's quite lovely. All we're asking is that, as you are our elective officials and we voted for you, that you represent the people that already live there, as well as the people that are going to live there, and consider how this will impact our quality of life severely. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card for Troy Born here in the room, and then we'll go to speakers on the, on Zoom. So if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, now is the time to use your raise hand feature or press star nine if you're on audio only to let us know that you wish to speak, and we'll put you in the queue. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Are you paying attention? Mr. Born.
My name's Troy Born, and I represent Speaker. Appreciate your time this afternoon, and although I'm representing Speaker, I have no intention of taking in 10 minutes either. I appreciate that we've been able to do this relatively efficiently. Speaker for the last three decades has been operating state-licensed continuing care retirement communities, and in those three decades have never sold a single property. We still are operating and running and caring for the seniors who live in our communities in each community where we've been approved and given the opportunity to build one of these projects. We have developed over three decades a reputation for being long-term good neighbors in the communities, and the local real estate values have reflected that as these communities are maintained as some of the best in the state of California. I do want to flag that I think it's really unique. I serve on a city council elsewhere, and I wish, I just want to flag something that's very unique that's happened here today. I wish that we had more projects with a lot of neighbors coming saying, "We really like this project." It's very unusual to have a room where there's a consistent saying, "Hey, we like the project, but maybe not here." And even more unusual to have someone say, "We really like this project. It's a great project," maybe even here if the access is through a different neighborhood. And so I think that we, you know, there might be some disagreement now and in the future about how this project's accessed, but I think that it's probably something to celebrate that we're looking and talking about a potential development that we can all acknowledge is really good and needed. I think that, and I think it's probably one, I do want to address that, the, as everybody in the room, the city council's aware, this project was approved unanimously by the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors after years of study and deliberations. And I appreciate that one of the neighbors here mentioned that we began meeting with neighbors and talking to them about project design and impact and different ways that we could impact the application in 2000, so years ago, years before the project was even heard by the county trying to incorporate their feedback. And we appreciate the way the city of Walnut Creek, although this project was processed through the county, has been incredibly proactive in making comments and suggestions to the county in ways that the project could be modified, impacts could be reduced, so that the residents of this area could benefit from it but have the impacts be as little as possible. And, and I think in part, that project was approved unanimously because the traffic impacts were clearly less than what was proposed in the current general plan, and certainly less than is what's being proposed currently in the now draft revised general plan, but also because it met a clear need in the county and in the city of Walnut Creek. I think it's, it's helpful to, someone mentioned very early in the meeting, that this is incredible to have this many people come to a meeting, and I love this process. It's part of the reason I get involved in local politics, and to have everybody conduct themselves the way they have is a compliment to the city. But someone very early on mentioned, you know, this is just a small fraction of, there's a thousand people in this HOA who doesn't want the road to be accessed adjacent to their neighborhood. And I think that, that's something, that this, the people who come out and speak are always a fraction of the people who are impacted by a board's decision. And you've had a few people come out and say, "I'd like to live there." I think it's probably important that you understand that nearly 2,300 seniors, local seniors, have placed deposits in the hope that they would be able to live in this community that's now been approved, representing over 1,300 households. If these were vacation condos, we would say that means that this development represents an unmet demand, but when it's a licensed care facility, licensed and approved by the Department of Social Services, it's more accurately described as an unmet need. We're proud to operate these communities in other areas of the state. For a long time, we have hoped to be able to come here to Walnut Creek. Speaker is a Bay Area native and has wanted to be here for a long time, and we were honored by the Hale families' invitation for us to be able to propose this project and are grateful for the approvals that are in place. We look forward now to having fruitful conversations with the city of Walnut Creek to discuss how this project can best be accessed in a way that helps meet the need for local seniors and also minimizes any impacts experienced by local neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, I'm going to turn to the clerk. I don't see anyone raising their hands in the remote.
No, there are no hands raised.
So with that, I am going to close public communication, and at this time, since council will reconvene in closed session, I will turn to the city attorney just to reiterate that we are going into closed session to have why we're in closed session versus open session, to have this discussion, and also what transpires after this.
So in closed session, the council has the two items that I mentioned before to consider. One would be the real property negotiation, so that could involve some direction to the staff regarding terms that the council may consider, but that would require, any action on that would require a public meeting, an open session meeting at which the item would be agendized, and any potential terms would, would be memorialized into a potential agreement that would be up for council consideration with regard, and that would, staff estimates that that's a minimum of several weeks to possibly several months into the future, depending on whether the council directs us to continue in discussions or not. And then the second thing is the closed session that's related to anticipated litigation, and that is a matter that, to the extent that there's any further potential litigation related to this project, the council would be advised with regards to that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Could I ask a further question of the city attorney, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And so regarding a closed session, is a closed session the normal course of action when it comes to any real estate property that the city has?
Thank you for that question. It is. The council operates as a body, and so like any type of real property negotiations, both, both sides need to understand the issues that are associated with a potential transaction, but the council needs to provide direction by majority of the council, however that may be. And so the purpose of a real property negotiations closed session is for the council as a whole to consider potential issues associated with the conveyance, including price and whatnot and terms. And then for the council to provide direction, and that can be by a unanimous vote of the council, that can be by, that can be by direction of the majority of the council. And then your negotiators, which are identified as Mr. Buckshire and myself, would then negotiate on behalf of the city, report back to the council. Anything that would come out of that, potentially come out of that, because it could be nothing, but anything that could potentially come out of that would then be brought back to the city council in open session with the public able to see all of the terms and to be able to speak to it. And it's only at that point that the council would take action on the matter, or could take action on the matter finally. The only thing that's happening today is consideration of the issues that are associated with this, but not any action.
Any other questions? Then we are closed to the public comment, and we will reconvene in closed session. Thank you all very much for being here this afternoon and for giving us your input. It will be duly considered.